The time is now seven o'clock and I'd like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. First order of visits is the roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Item two is the pledge of allegiance. Will we all stand, please?
Pledge of Allegiance, we declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is special order of the day and announcements. Item 3A is a proclamation supporting participation in the Big Read program. Mark Twain in the Rock River Basin, Beloit Public Library. Our council vice president, Vanda Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an official proclamation of the city of Beloit, supporting participation in the Big Read program, Mark Twain in the Rock River Basin. Whereas Mark Twain is recognized as a national literary American original author and his work is of interest to our citizens. And whereas the National Endowment of the Arts recognizes the critical national importance of improving literacy in students and the general public, the nation's biggest literacy campaign, The Big Read, is an attempt to demonstrate the need for literacy and engage citizenry. And whereas the broad community, or a broad community effort to improve literacy will provide for a diverse range of activities and events that will encourage a spectrum of our citizens to read Mark Twain's work and be engaged in other Big Read activities taking place at the Beloit Public Library. And whereas our city and library appreciates the importance of reading and will join the Big Read effort in 2012 to promote the reading of Mark Twain's work. And whereas our city will take advantage, will take up, excuse me, take up the challenge and jointly read Mark Twain along with other communities in southern Wisconsin, culminating in a book discussion of Tom Sawyer on April 25th at the Beloit Public Library. And whereas our city recognizes the efforts of the NEA and efforts across our region and community to ensure that every citizen is an active, literate participant in community discourse. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of Beloit, does hereby proclaim April 12th, excuse me, April 2012 as Big Read, Mark Twain in the Rock River Basin Month in our community to demonstrate our commitment to improving the literacy of students and citizens. Presented this second day of April 2012, Kevin D. Levy, council president. Accepting the proclamation is Kristi Howe, the director at the public library.
Item 3B is a proclamation recognizing April as National Fair Housing Month. Vice President Vanda Bogart.
This really is a secret test to see if I can...
Yes, just to see if I can...
This is also an official proclamation of the city of Beloit. This is a resolution recognizing April as National Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 2012 marks the 44th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, and therefore is an appropriate time for all citizens to reflect on the principles which led to a national policy of fair and equal housing opportunities across the United States. And whereas fair and equal opportunity in housing means that persons of equal income, excuse me, equal income have the same access to the sale, rental, and financing of all housing regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, marital status, sexual orientation, age, or ancestry. And whereas fair housing is the policy of the city of Beloit and the implementation of the policy requires the positive commitment, involvement, and support of each of our citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Beloit, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Fair Housing Month and does hereby encourage all citizens to abide by the letter and spirit of fair housing laws and ask the citizens of the city to join reaffirming the obligation and commitment to fair housing opportunities for all. Adopted this second day of April 2012, Kevin D. Levy, council president. Accepting the proclamation is Terry Downing.
Thank you. Item four is public hearings. There are none. Item five is citizens' participation. We've reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and speak on items that are not listed on the agenda. Staff will not, and council will not act on this, but we would refer to the appropriate staff. We do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We ask you to refrain from personal attacks from council and staff and each other, but we want to keep everything professional and keep it moving forward. I do have one citizen participation signup sheet. Kristi Hendrick. Please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kristi Hendrick. I live at 740 Grant Street, Beloit. And I'm here just to thank the council for giving an opportunity for us to talk about the pro-chicken ordinance and simply express our gratitude. And we have some eggs for you. I also have 169 more petitions that we've collected or signatures under petition.
Okay. Let me give those to the clerk.
Thank you.
And the eggs also. Thank you. Somehow I better jump in here quick. I see this taking over the vibe of its own here. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' participation this evening? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone else? Seeing none, I would like to close that portion of the agenda and move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any counselor, like anything removed from the consent agenda? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that item D, as in dog, be removed, please.
Item 6D will be removed. Anyone else? Seeing none, the consent agenda now consists of items 6A through C and E through K. Is there a motion to approve that portion of the consent agenda? Motion by hand, second by Vanda Bogart. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving that portion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion passes. Item 6D, Counselor DeForest, would you like to hear a full presentation on this or do you ask specific questions?
It might be helpful for the public to get a general description of the projects so they understand the questions I'm asking.
Okay. Mr. Flash, please.
Very good. This is for the final payment of the Hawthorne Sewer Extension and Water Extension. It was a special assessment project. The requirements of the contract have been met and completed to the satisfaction of the city. The city engineer, the city attorney, and the director of accounting recommend that a final payment be made to GMS Excavators Incorporated in the amount of $7,051.96.
My specific question is, I heard from a resident that a section of the new road that was paved had sunk in. And I went out to look at the site and there is a section of the new paved road that was, it had to be dug up and now there's just gravel there. I'm concerned that it's not really done and I'd like to withhold the final payment until the repave has occurred.
Okay. You have that option. Yes, it is true.
So when you say the project is complete...
The project was complete. It would be considered a warranty item for the repairs that have been made to this point and they will be doing the paving probably within the next four to six weeks.
Okay. Would there be any harm in waiting to actually provide the final payment when it is truly complete?
We do have a maintenance bond and we do have a one-year warranty within our contract. So we have money on, like in a reserve account in a bonding company that the contractor has to maintain their rating. Our $7,000 will probably not even cover the cost of the asphalt that needs to go down. So the contractor is standing behind it. He does not want to have his bond rating impacted because it's like our bond rating for our borrowing. Keeping a good bond rating makes it so that they're able to bid on other projects. And if we have to notify the bond company that they're not performing, it impacts their rating and it costs them money, more money in the long run. So if you want to lay it over, you can. I mean, we can hold the check. If you want to continue with the final payment process, we can hold the check until the paving is done also. Either one of those options works.
Will it serve as a means of leveraging a more timely response to make sure that it's...
Probably not, not at just about $7,000. It wasn't that large of a contract overall.
And then I had sent an email asking if there was a sense of what caused the problem and is the repave included in the contingency funds that we have set aside? Are we paying for it or is the contractor...
The contractor's paying for the entire repair. There is no additional funds from the city to be paid.
Okay.
Other than the $7,000 that was originally part of the contract.
And I know that you had mentioned there was a plan that the sewer...
We are going to...
...would be flushed to...
Right. We're going to be checking the sewer line, the Santray Sewer Line that was installed in that section, that there was a problem with settlement to verify that the pipe maintains appropriate alignment. That'll be done within the next week.
Okay. I guess I would feel more comfortable with waiting and laying this over until I know the project truly is completed. That would be my preference. Thank you.
Mr. Flash, I have a follow-up question to that. Is it safe to, I'm not going to say assume, but just guess that we, there's been certain situations where we have approved the final payment and the final payment has been made and then we've had to call the contractor back to do some additional work? I mean, that's not saying that that's the norm.
There's warranty work, yes. Sometimes we do have that happen. And they are always quite responsive to making sure that it's done. They want to work with us again, too.
Okay.
And if they don't respond, they aren't going to be able to work with us either.
Okay. Okay. Any other council questions or comments? And I'm hearing Counselor DeForest indicating that she would like to lay this over. I didn't hear that as an official motion at this time. So there is a, there is a motion? Is there a motion? And is there a motion, a second on here, or...
No.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I can make a motion that we lay this over, I would request to do that if I can obtain a second.
Okay. There is a motion by Counselor DeForest to lay this over. Point of clarification is, as I always say, when we say lay something over, I like to put a timeframe on it so we're not just laying it over and... I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
I'd like to lay it over until, from the resident's perspective, the project is complete. If they're still driving over gravel, in their minds, the project's not complete, so...
And...
I don't know how soon. If you're saying they'll get to it that quickly, then perhaps in two weeks it will be done? Is that what we're being told, or...
Asphalt plant's just opened today. I can't guarantee the schedule yet. They haven't given me an idea of when they plan on doing it.
Which is exactly why I'd like to lay this over.
Normally it's, asphalt plants open historically. This is an odd year. They're normally open around the first of May and we were in hopes that it'd be all complete by the 15th for a normal year. It should be faster than that probably this year.
But I guess it's safe to say that even if the final payment is distributed, that there are mechanisms in place that the contractor knows that they need to come back and repair anything that's broken, that's something that...
Oh, indeed. There's standard contract language for all of that.
So we're, in other words, we're protected in that avenue to say you, this is not complete, you need to come back?
Correct.
And they have to do it?
Correct.
Okay. There is, Counselor DeForest offers up a motion. Is there a second to her motion?
Mr. President, since we do many times do the payment schedule the way that Counselor DeForest is mentioning, I will second the motion.
There is a motion by Counselor DeForest and a second by Counselor Noonham to lay this over. All this, any counsel, Counselor Spritzer?
Did we clarify when we're laying it over till, or how we're...
My understanding from Counselor DeForest is this is to be laid over until the entire project is complete. And I guess what I'm also hearing is when it's complete as it's deemed or heard from the residents, if I'm hearing that correctly. With that statement alone, I would kind of be nervous about that because staff and the contractor may say the project is complete. But you may have a resident that says it's complete, but it's not complete to the way that I like it. So in my mind, it's not complete. So I want us to be careful as we walk down this slippery slope. When we say complete, I think the completeness or the direction needs to come from this body of saying, here's what we mean by complete, and also staff.
Would it help to clarify, to say, to request my motion to lay it over until there is pavement on the road that was to be repaved?
That's a fine item.
Okay.
It's, so, the motion states to lay the, delay final payment until there's pavement put in place where there's no pavement now, basically.
That would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. I think that makes it a little bit easier to vote for this, but I still think that a $7,000 withholding of payment isn't enough to make much of an inducement one way or another and that we have sufficient guarantees and warranties without having to lay it over.
Okay. Any other counselor? There is, Counselor DeForest?
Sorry, if I could make one more comment. I do think it's a matter of principle, though, even though I understand that we do have these warranties in effect to protect us for this very reason. I think it doesn't sit well with residents when we, when they see that we've issued a final pavement and their road still is not paved. So I just think it's a matter of respecting the way residents perceive the issue. Thank you.
Okay. There is a motion and a second. Motion by DeForest, second by Noonham. All in favor to lay this over, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Fails?
Two, two, five.
By. Now to the original motion. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Motion by Lukey, second by Lukey.
No.
Now, Noonham.
What an honor to be...
See, we just stick to this and you got me all confused. No. Motion by Lukey, second by Noonham to approve item 6D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Passes six to one. Thank you. Item seven, ordinances. There are none. Item eight, appointments. There are none. Item nine, counselor, upcoming events and activities. Counselor Spritzer.
I had the chance to serve pancakes at the Welty Center Maple Syrup Festival on Saturday and had a great time there. It was great to see everybody out and enjoy that festival. And also want to encourage everybody to turn out and vote tomorrow. It's an important election with a lot of different things on the ballot, including four city council seats and the referendum. So please vote and please support the referendum as we passed our resolution last month encouraging everybody to do. It's very important for our schools.
Counselor Noonham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do like to encourage folks to get out and vote tomorrow. Elections do have consequences. It was only four years ago, nearly to the date, that we had one election cycle for city council that was determined by one vote. I'm very proud of our staff, as memory serves me well. After a recount, unlike some other states that had challenges with things hanging around, we still had it determined by one vote. So kudos to our staff once again for that. Votes do matter. There are consequences. I hope people will try to educate themselves in the, this evening and be prepared to vote tomorrow. I had posted on Facebook that I thought tonight was my last televised city council meeting. I'm very glad and appreciative that it's not, so I still have one more. And it continues to be a great honor and each passing week, I cherish it and appreciate this opportunity from the citizens. Lastly, I've been very impressed with the folks that are pro-chicken for the, this ordinance. They've been very well organized. I have heard from some residents that are opposed to it. And I would encourage them, if they are, to also get organized and let us know. We do want to hear both sides of all issues. Thank you.
Counselor Lukey?
I'm glad you didn't lay an egg with that last statement.
I knew it. Did I not say this was good?
I'll say it for you.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep it in line here.
Some puns are more punishing than others. I also want to encourage everybody to vote and Rebecca, they do not need to bring their ID tomorrow. Is that correct?
No. As of today at 7:19, they do not need to bring an ID.
Okay. So everybody should vote tomorrow. I was fortunate, along with the city manager, the assistant to the city manager, Vice President Mandy Bogart, to serve meals with the Meals on Wheels program a couple weeks ago. And last Saturday, on that cold Saturday morning, there was a race sponsored by the Meals on Wheels called the Mush Run. And there were 125 people that ran. Chief almost got first place, but I think he let somebody else win the race. But it was a very nice race, held to raise funds for Meals on Wheels. Thank you.
Counselor DeForest?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to encourage everyone to vote. I'm excited by the privilege and opportunity that we have to do so. And I'm certainly glad that we'll have Eric here for one more meeting. I also want to commend the library for participating in The Big Read and I will accept the challenge and we'll read Tom Sawyer again. It's been probably about 20 years since I've read it, so I'm probably dating myself because I can tell you I read it in high school. But it will be a wonderful chance to reacquaint myself with a great piece of literature. So thank you for that. And then I also wanted to thank Terry Downing and her efforts with fair housing. It's an issue near and dear to my heart. I'm grateful for the commission. I saw Matt Finnegan come in, who serves on that commission with us. Thank you for volunteering your time. Thank you to all those commission members who work hard to make sure that we have fair housing in the city of Beloit. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Haynes?
Well, I'm tired from hearing all this. Thanks, but, Noah, thank you, Mr. President. I think it's, as Counselor Noonham had mentioned, that we have had elections determined by one vote. Being the recipient of that one vote, I certainly appreciate everyone that shows up. So thank you very much and I'll look forward to seeing everybody's polls tomorrow.
Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Well, I can't resist. For quite some time after that election, I referred to my fellow counselor as Landslide Haynes. But I had occasion, along with city manager Arft and attorney Casper, to attend the vote with the Legislative Council for the Ho-Chunk Nation at Black River Falls on the 20th of March. You will recall that vote was successful in the sense of approving the intergovernmental agreement. And as I understand, the nation is proceeding with their application for the gaming facility. I did participate, along with Counselor Lukey, again with city manager Arft and with Beth Jacobson, in the Meals on Wheels program in March here in Beloit. It's always a privilege to get to deliver meals to those people who can't get out and can get them themselves. I'd like to give a brief report on the progress with the Downtown Business Association and their search for upcoming executive director. They've closed the application period. They've received 55 applications. Nineteen of them are from the greater Beloit area. They've received applications from as far away as California, Alaska, and South Dakota. They are in the process of eliminating some of those individuals and proceeding with a process and they are, it's a work in progress. I would point out that on the 20th of April coming up, Beloit will be hosting the State of Wisconsin Main Street Awards Ceremony. Between 200 and 300 fellow Badgers will be in town during that Friday and into Saturday, perhaps, celebrating their achievements in their various communities. Will get a chance to play host to those individuals. The planning process includes downtown activities as well as tours of the college. I did participate then this weekend, as Counselor Lukey mentioned, with the Meals on Wheels Mushing for Meals program on Saturday morning downtown. The notable event for me was that my two-year-old, two-and-a-half-year-old grandson participated in the mile walk and he finished it all by himself without me having to carry him. And as he crossed the finish line, he raised his hands up and said, "I won! I won!" And I think he probably did. His age group, he was the only one, so he won. We then went out to the wealthy pancake feed and I can attest that Counselor Spritzer cooks a mean pancake. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Two more meetings. This is this one and one more. And you guys are making it tough on me, you know? Come here and just, but I like that. And I just want to share this with my colleagues on the, on the council here, that it's nice to come down here. We know that we have a lot of business to conduct. And we know we have seven different personalities, as I say so often. But it's nice to be able to see each other having a good time down here. That should let the public know that even though we come down here with different attitudes and different opinions, when we walk away from here, you know, we're still cordial to each other and we're still respectable. That shows professionalism of my colleagues. But it also shows the dedication that we have to the city, that we want to bring, put our best foot forward. But I think it's, too often, people think that, you know, counselors don't get along and then if they see us having fun down here, sometimes it's maybe taken the wrong way that we're not taking what we do seriously, but we do. And I think in life, everyone needs to laugh a little bit and just have a, you know, good time every once in a while. So I just want to say that to all my colleagues here, you know, that I really appreciate it. You know, being the president for the last couple of years, I mean rounding out my term here, that it's been great working with all of you down here. Challenging at times, especially tonight, but, you know, we get through that because you're all very professional in what you do. I mean, you all have a passion for the city, so I want to thank you for that. And with that, we move on to item 10, city manager's presentation.
Mr. President, we do have a presentation tonight on analysis of impediments to fair housing. Terry Downing, one of the supervisors in the Community Development Department, and among a number of different task insurers. She also serves as our Fair Housing Enforcement Officer. So with that, Terry, I'm going to turn the program over to you and welcome.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening, councilors. This presentation is a very brief presentation of the analysis of impediments to fair housing that we've prepared for HUD. As you can see, this document is a huge document. So in order to condense it into a PowerPoint, there is a lot more information. And the last slide has the link and the address of how you can get to the actual document in order to review it. Before I get started, I do want to thank, I put this together and Michael Lofton, who started as an intern with us. He did a lot of the research in this, in this document and he's now an assistant planner. And Samantha Timko is the city manager's intern and she also did some research that you'll see in the presentation and in this document. And I would also like to thank our UHRC or our Fair Housing Commission. Mark Spritzer is the councilman that serves on that commission and one of our members, Matt Finnegan, is here. And our Fair Housing Commission had a lot of comments and helped us identify the, any impediments to fair housing. We had two workshops that they patiently went through with me in order to make sure that this document was right. And the last people, set of people I'd like to thank are the community leaders that came out for our first workshop, which included Regina Duncan from the Merrill Center. We had people from Neighborhood Housing Services, people from the Community Support Program with the mental health portion of the county. I know I'm missing... with the mental health portion of the county. I know I'm missing lots and lots of people. Do you remember any more, Mark?
Corey was there for the session.
Oh, the Beloit Domestic Violence Center, people from Family Services, and lots of others. We had about 14 people that helped us with comments on these. So I will start. And you're probably all asking, what is an analysis of impediments to fair housing? It is a research study that all cities that receive CDBG are required to do as a part of the affirmatively furthering fair housing certification that we do in order to receive those CDBG funds. Community development perspective looks at housing needs. The fair housing perspective looks at the causes of those needs. This study describes the current demographic, economic lending, and housing profile of the city. And also, it looks at these statistics in order to find out if there are any impediments to indicators of possible fair housing issues. It also reviews the policies, procedures, and practices and local societal tendencies that may impede fair housing choice. It identifies any impediments that are found to fair housing choice and recommends specific actions to remediate the impediments. The goal is to foster fair housing choice for all residents of the city of Beloit. An impediment is any action, omission, or decision taken because of a protected class. It's basically any obstacle that may come up that impedes fair housing choice, whether it's intentional or not. These are the HUD definitions here on your screen. And a third definition, oh, I'm sorry, I must have taken that slide out. So, and any action, omission, or decision that have, that has the effect of impeding fair housing choice. What is a protected class? You probably all know that a protected class is a group of people who share a characteristic that historically has been used as the reason for discrimination. There's the impediment. Apologize, I had my slides flipped. There are three jurisdictions that have fair housing laws. Federal, Wisconsin, and Beloit has a fair housing ordinance. That's in the last column there. And each jurisdiction has a different list of protected classes that enforcement, that they can enforce fair housing for. So the statistics that you'll see in this presentation, well, some of the statistics are demographic, economic, housing, and lending here in the city of Beloit. The first is our population and the age of our population. As you can see, since 1990, Beloit's population has changed as follows in regards to age. The age range of 25 to 34 has decreased. And the age range from 55 to 64 has increased by 29%. Population changes by race show that a minority population has increased by 84%. That's largely due to the Hispanic-Latino population increase, which is 816.4% since 1990. The white population has decreased since 1990 by 12.4%. Our minority distribution in the city of Beloit is on this map. I can't see the census tracts. 18 and 23 is what I see are the largest, were you going to tell me what they are? Oh, no. The darkest, the darkest areas are the largest minority concentrated areas. So 16, 23, or I'm sorry, 18 and 23. 18 and 23 are the ones that have the largest minority concentration in the city of Beloit. Our Hispanic or Latino distribution is shown on this map. And as you can see, it's largely concentrated in the center of the city. So in summary, the aging population, the population has changed. The aging population has increased, and the younger population has decreased. There's been a significant growth of minority population in the city of Beloit. And minority concentrations are within census tracts 15, 17, and 18. The economic profile in this document contains information on income, education, and employment of our residents. The median household income in Beloit is 36, approximately $37,000. And the graph shows comparison between Beloit, Janesville, Rock County, and Wisconsin overall. The median household income by race is on the next slide. Can see that the white and the Asian populations in Beloit are higher than the other races in the community. The federal poverty level is listed here on this table. The highlighted portion, the second highlighted portion, is for a family of four, just for the sake of example. It does go by household size. So, and again, I can't Below 21, approximately 22,000 per year. So the income below poverty level by race shows, is shown in this pie chart. You know, I can see this a lot better sitting at my computer than... I had so much more to say when I could actually see what it says. And then the income limits, area median income for Janesville, MSA, that's the metropolitan statistical area, which is the most narrowed downfield we could get statistics for, is shown here. And the income levels are based on a four-person household. So $65,000 is the area median income. Moderate income, low income, and very low income are defined by percentages of that $65,000. So moderate income distributions within the city, the more moderate or higher-level income is the darker areas on the map. So more outside or around the outskirts of the city there. The low-income distributions, you can see the map is getting lighter, and it's moving more towards the middle of the city. And then the very low-income distributions are again in those same census tracts that we saw before, in the middle of the city. Income by familial status is shown on this graph. And I want to point out that females, female head of households with children have the lowest income of families in the city of Beloit. The second lowest are male head of households with children. Educational attainment in our community is in this graph. And you can see that Beloit has a higher number of less-than-high-school and only-high-school educations compared to the rest of, well, our neighboring communities in the state. Beloit's employment by industry is listed here. Our largest industry is manufacturing and educational, healthcare, and social services. Oh, thank you. Smarter than I am. Let me find my place here. What this map shows is the number of workers that live and work here, and the number of workers that only work here but live outside of the community, and the number of workers that live here but work outside of the community. So we have approximately 10,000 people who come into the city to work but live in other communities. We have approximately 10,000 people that live here but leave the city for work. And then we have approximately 5,000 people that live and work here. So Beloit workers who live elsewhere but come here to work, they're living in Janesville, South Beloit, Rockton, you know, neighboring communities. Beloit workers who work elsewhere, they live here, but they're working in Janesville, Madison, South Beloit are the top three. The unemployment rate, as you can see, for Beloit is higher than our neighboring communities in the state. I think, I don't think this is a new statistic. And this is through 2010. So the, you know, we, that's the newest statistics that we had. So hopefully, that's gone down a little bit. Unemployment by gender is shown here. Males are unemployed at a higher rate than females in this area. So in summary, we have 60% of minority individuals with income below the poverty level. Single people with children are disproportionate, they disproportionately have very low incomes. There's a concentration of very low income and public assistance income in those three census tracts. 62% of our population has a high school diploma or less. Half of the labor force employed in manufacturing and service industries. And there's a high unemployment rate. Sounds pretty gloomy. I apologize for that. Next is our housing profile, which the analysis talks about our housing stock, the owner versus renter, distribution, and then the distribution between owner versus renter. So in the left pie chart, you can see that the housing occupancy of all of our housing units, the occupancy rate is the blue area. And then the vacancy rate is in the red area. The age of the housing units is in this pie chart. And as you can see, most of our housing units are, were built before 1960. The value of our owner-occupied units, the median value is in this graph. I would like to point out that this is from the American Community Survey, which was from 2005 to 2009. I don't know if this is exactly accurate with the housing market crash. So I just want to make you aware of that. But the value is between 50,000 and 150,000 for most of our units. Well, it's the median value, if I'm reading that correctly. The median value by census tract, as you remember from the, from the other maps, Census Tract 18 was the one with the highest level of low-income, very-low-income persons or households. And it was also the highest level of minority concentration. That's why it's in red here. This graph shows the comparison of housing cost burden for families or for households who rent and families or households who own. So the red shows the percentage of people who are paying more than 35% of their income towards their housing expenses. And the blue is for the owner-occupied households. This is the distribution of the owner-occupied units within the city. The darker the color, the more owner-occupied units there are. And on the outside of, or the periphery of the city. And the distribution of the renter-occupied units, the higher the number of rentals, the darker the area. And again, this is, there's a concentration in the middle of the city. It's not Census Tract 18 as the highest. This time it is 16 and 20?
15.
15? 15 and 16. Well, 15. The second highest is 18, however. This is a distribution of the housing vacancies within the city. And it's concentrated also within the center of the city. So in summary, 57% of housing units are built before 1960. Census Tract 18 has the lowest median value. The majority of renters spend more for housing compared to owners. And there's a concentration of rental housing units in tracts 15, 16, and 18. The lending profile looks at the applications, the loan types, and the denial rates of our residents. Mortgage applications by type, we have home purchase or first mortgage applications, home improvement mortgage applications, and refinances. As you can see, the refis are much higher than the home purchase or the home improvement loans. The, I'm going to go back for a second. The home purchase loans are separated into two categories. There's government-backed loans, and then there's conventional mortgages with the banks that are privately invested. So you'll see two graphs for the same home purchase-type loans. The first is the government mortgage denial rates. The, and these are like FHA loans, WIDA loans, things like that. And this is broken up by race. And these are denial rates again. Conventional mortgages are also for home purchase. And these are also broken up by Can't see this really on the screen, but what this is, and it's, it's in the analysis, is it shows the applications by census tract. It shows the origination rates and the denial rates by census tract. And if you would like more information about this, I could email this document to you directly. Or if you go to the website, it's in the analysis itself. The refinanced mortgage denial rates are in this graph by race. If there's a blank there, it's just, for some reason, the statistics And then home improvement mortgage denial rates by race are in this graph. This table shows the reasons for denial. And I won't be able to see it on this. This table shows the reasons for denial, and I won't be able to see it on this. But most of the denial reasons were for credit history and employment history for all types Debt-to-income ratio was another one. So, if they had too much debt and not enough income, they wouldn't be able to get a loan. This analysis also looks at city, city policies and reviews them for any indicators that there may be, they may be hindering fair housing. So, we look at city programs, the boards and commissions, codes, codes and ordinances, and then the fair housing process in the city. So, the city programs that were looked at were the residential rehabilitation loan program through the community development department and the lead hazard grant program. The Beloit Housing Authority policies, well, programs were reviewed for this document as well, including public housing, Section 8, family self-sufficiency, and the Section 8 homeownership program. The community development grant programs were reviewed, which includes the CDBG program, the home program, and the NSP program. The boards and committees that were reviewed for this project were the Equal Opportunities and Human Relations Commission, the Plan Commission, and the Community Development Authority. And the city codes and ordinances that were reviewed were Chapter 7 Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 8 Plumbing Code, Chapter 9 Building Code, the Chapter 12 Subdivision and Official Map Ordinance, Chapter 19 Zoning Ordinance, and the City of Beloit's Affirmative Action and Equal Opportunity Policy. All of the chapters that were reviewed were related to housing. The fair housing process within the city was reviewed, and it is a requirement to be reviewed for this document. It also, I think, does us some good to look at our processes and procedures. So, the Fair Housing Commission was reviewed. It is a citizen board of seven members and one city council rep. It has two duties, which are advisory and enforcement. They enforce the fair housing ordinance, which is the Chapter 20 Fair Housing Code, which prohibits discrimination based on protected class for the sale or rental or financing of housing. It also outlines the complaint process. The fair housing complaints within the City of Beloit over the last five years are in this table. There's a total of 33 complaints since 2006. Of those complaints, 30 of them were renters, and three of them were homeowners. Two were against a condo association and one against a real estate transaction. So, the fair housing code doesn't only apply to rental or renters. So, identification of fair housing impediments. There are three types of fair housing impediments: fair housing concerns, public sector impediments, and private sector impediments. A fair housing concern is something that's not quite an impediment, but we need to keep an eye on it because it may become one and take proactive steps to make sure that that doesn't happen. So, the first one is the building codes. The age of the housing stock may pose a barrier for accessibility purposes. Because we do have an older, older housing stock, we just have to make sure that our codes are inclusive and allow for accessibility adjustments and things. The boards and commission composition. The city ordinances say that they should reflect the diverse nature of the city's population. This is only being applied informally. There isn't really a process that we go through to make sure that they reflect what the city is, the residents of the city are. There's a lack of loan applications for first mortgages by African-American households. And one of the set of statistics we received, there were, I want to say, three applicants compared to 200 or 300 of, of other races. So, I think more research needs to be done to make sure there aren't any fair lending issues in that area. Public sector impediments. There's been an inconsistent administration of fair housing code. The responsibility has changed departments and divisions multiple times since 2004, and that results in a lack of education. The process gets lost. The chart that we looked at before, the table we looked at before, there were two years where the housing complaints dropped to zero when we traditionally had complaints between eight and 10 per year. That was just because nobody knew where to direct fair housing complaints to. So, it's important that we always, we have some consistency there. There's a, the second one here is a lack of bilingual city staff for housing programs. As you saw, the statistic for the Spanish-speaking population and the Latino population in particular has grown tremendously, and we don't have a lot of bilingual staff for the housing programs in particular. One of the impediments the EOHRC Commission identified was, there was a limited number of housing choice vouchers. Also, our focus group with the community leaders identified this as an impediment due to the number of low-income families that we have in the city. They also identified low payment standards for the housing choice voucher program. The community leaders and the EOHRC thought that that was keeping people in certain areas of the city because they had limited ability to move outside of those areas into more expensive housing. The supply of subsidized housing and rental housing was also identified by the focus group. The adequacy and availability of the units is what the issue was, not the affordability of them. There just wasn't enough of them, or the adequacy of them was substandard, or the quality was substandard. Origination and denial rates, as you saw from the previous slides, the rates are lower in census tracts where non-white populations exceed 25%. Language barriers is another private sector impediment, especially in the rental and land contract realm of housing. We're seeing some difficulties there and with contracts and things. Resident opposition. Since 2004, two proposed affordable housing developments received major resident opposition. And then the last one here is lack of community advocacy groups for disabled persons and persons with HIV. So, recommended actions to promote, promote fair housing. Recommendation number one is to provide consistent responsibility for administration of the city's fair housing code. Number two here is to continue our fair housing and outreach efforts. Number three is to provide education to public officials and relevant groups regarding low-income tax credit projects to have a better sense of what these, what the projects involve, so there isn't such an uproar from the community when it happens. Number four is to provide education regarding housing contracts to linguistically isolated Number five is to continue to reach out to the disabled community and their advocates. Number six is to further research the low number of mortgage applicants among, among African-Americans in Beloit. And the last one here is to explore options in the housing choice voucher program to increase the payment standards and the number of vouchers available to the housing authority. And that is this document in a nutshell. I'll entertain any questions you'd have.
Counselor DeCourse.
Thank you. Thank you for this analysis. I appreciate it. If I could ask, in terms of a general process question first, so, the recommendations are wonderful. What would be the next step in the process to try to put some of those recommendations into practice?
I have to refresh my memory now.
Well, especially I'm looking at recommendation number four that talks about doing a better job of reaching out to those who speak a different language.
Oh.
So, is there a priority amongst our housing departments to require that the next staff position hired speaks Spanish as well? Or what are we doing concretely to address that?
I can't answer that question because I, I'm not sure. I think the first step is to bring awareness to the issue, which is what this document does. And then, as a city or as a community development department, maybe we can work together to make sure that with new hires and things, we can ask that there be bilingual staff.
I, I know, for example, the recommendation number seven, this has been brought up before when I was on the CDA, and I know it's been brought up a couple of times since then about the, the payment standards for Section 8. We heard that loud and clear from lots of different groups, landlords and tenants. I guess, I guess my concern, these are really excellent recommendations. I don't want them to just sit on a shelf. I'd like to see us actually have serious dialogue about what we can do to address some of these. Do you have any suggestions for how we as a body can help support that work, that they move from recommendations to actually things that we do to redress them?
I'm not exactly sure how the housing authority gets approved for more vouchers or how that works. So, this is just a first step of identifying any, that, things that we could look into, and we haven't moved forward yet because this is a brand-new document of doing anything yet. And the community development director is aware of these, and she's read this document. So, I think from there, we just internally kind of explore options.
At this point, we don't even have HUD's approval of the document.
Okay.
So, I guess I'm hesitant to move forward until we have that approval. You know, specifically the housing authority thing, you know, one of the thing with the payment standards is that it's got to be balanced by number of people we serve. Because if we don't fill our vouchers because we're paying more in rent, then we are a standard performer and then less money comes into Beloit. So, there is a balance between not just, we need to pay more, we also have to use those dollars wisely. So, it's not just a simple, I mean, that's why it's explore options to see what we can do, because there still has, we still have to make the most of our dollars. So, we can't just give more so that they can have nicer units and then serve fewer people. We still have a lot of people who need Section 8. So, I mean, and we are through, you know, phase two. We are looking at doing some additional stuff, but, you know, with those nine units, we may end up providing some more low-income housing. But at this point, I mean, this document was just completed in January. It's still going through HUD review in the fair housing office. So, I mean, we'll start looking at implementation once we have that approval from HUD. But at this point, we're kind of, you know, waiting to see what, they haven't commented on it, as far as I know.
Great. So, would it be fair to request that we receive a report back at some point about what the staff plans to do to implement it?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I would like-
I didn't want to put you in the spot. I just wanted to make sure all your hard work doesn't just sit there, so.
When I'm standing up here, all my ideas fly out of my head, so.
That's right.
I would like to point out that this is a common impediment found throughout the United States. So, if you look up any neighboring community, Milwaukee in particular, you look up their analysis, and this will come up as an impediment. It's just kind of, you know, there's just not enough money, so. So, we're not unique in that aspect.
Okay.
Counselor Spright, sir.
Thank you for the, presenting the report. I know we spent a lot of time discussing this in the commission, and it's great to have a chance to share this with the rest of the council and with the public. I just wanted to raise, sort of for the benefit of, of the rest of the counselors, and, and if you have any thoughts on this, something that I mentioned in the commission, which is whether there would be any advantage or any reason we should or shouldn't consider amending our ordinances to include everything covered by the state of Wisconsin. There's the one status as a victim of domestic abuse, sexual abuse, or stalking that Wisconsin covers that we don't. And I was wondering if it would make sense to update our ordinance to reflect that, if you have any thoughts on that.
We certainly could. It would come to the EOHRC first for their recommendation, and then there would be an ordinance revision, but it would eventually come to the city council for approval. Is that correct, Larry?
Well, that's, that's correct. I think the issue here that we would have to decide right now, a lot of these things are covered under the state statute. The state has agencies and a large number of professionally-trained staff that do nothing but deal with these kind of equal opportunity and human relations issues. And if you put all of that in municipal code book, make all those code violations, then we're going to have to have the staff be available to handle all those complaints locally. Right now, we have staff to handle what we need to do locally, and then she can refer people to the state agency to make their complaints directly with the state organization. And that's worked real well for us. So, that's, that would be the decision point, drive all that, those complaints locally rather than going to the state, and we're going to have to staff up to deal with them all at the local level.
Anything else, Counselor Spright, sir?
That's all.
Counselor Nuno.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Downing. It's always great to see you. I miss being on the CDA. It was a great pleasure to serve with you. You guys do great work. Thank you. On page 20, it talks about the distribution of rental-occupied units, and in Ward 15, that has the largest number of rental units based on, you know, for the, by Ward. Does the college in any way affect that?
Is this something that Sam researched, or was this your portion?
Is it a percentage or a number? Because you're-
It is a percentage.
It's a percentage.
It's greater than 50%.
It's downtown, so.
Yeah.
It's probably because the housing units who have downtown are rented. We don't get a lot of owner-occupied downtown.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then on page 32, talks about challenges that we need to look at. And I, specifically on the bilingual issue, it would be great, of course, we know that budgets are challenging right now and not looking promising to improve anytime soon, so it'll be very difficult to add additional staffing. I'm just wondering if we have, on each shift, someone that is bilingual in case there's a serious issue that comes up. Of course, I realize that that takes them away from their regular duties, but if, if there is a serious concern, is there somebody here that you would be able to resource to, to use for this issue?
I, I'm bilingual. I'm the, I think, the only person in City Hall that's bilingual. There might be somebody else, but I believe I'm the only person. I am available during business hours and by cellphone. We haven't had any, outside of when I worked for the Housing Authority, they had two people who were, spoke Spanish only. We haven't had any issues that have come up, you know, for emergency sake, but I have come down and helped the police department and the Housing Authority, code enforcement, the building inspectors, you know, with, with some Spanish. But I think it's a good suggestion.
It, it stretches you probably pretty thin, but thank you very much for, for doing Then on the last page, recommendation number seven. Of course, it's been a couple of years since I've been on the CDA, but I believe a couple of years ago, because we had so many applicants, and there was no way that we were going to ever be able to fulfill the vouchers for the current applicants. Didn't we put a cap on, on those, and have we since then removed that cap?
I think they closed the, they closed the list. They weren't taking any more lists until, because it was over 600 families, I believe.
Yeah.
And then they've reopened it since.
Okay.
So, yeah, they close it when they get too many applications to manage. Well, it just doesn't make sense to keep a list of 600 or 700 families.
Right.
So.
Sometimes it gives false hope, too. So, great. Thank you very much. Great report.
Thank you.
Counselor DeCourse.
Sorry, I do have one specific question. The denial rates for whites were included, I know, because they're not a special population, but it makes it hard to compare. Do you have that somewhere that you could send to us?
We do.
Do you know what I mean? Because it makes it hard to compare the denial rates if we don't know what they are typically for whites. So, that would be wonderful. And I, I guess, I'm just sitting here a little bit flabbergasted of what I thought. I just heard you say that, as far as you know, you're the only person in the entire City Hall that speaks.
Well, Kathy speaks Spanish.
Kathy speaks Spanish, and-
Kathy speaks Spanish, and we're also able to call Norma Vargas. She speaks Spanish if we need help over the phone. Guillermo, in the engineering division, has always been willing to talk to us over the phone. We put him on speaker. So, we have other people in the city. We have police officers who speak Spanish who have helped us on occasion. But if you look at in-house staff, you know, sitting in City Hall, and office workers, Terry and Kathy are really the only ones who are truly bilingual. And it's a, you know, we've limited training dollars. It costs money to, you know, have people learn Spanish, and we haven't had a ton of new hires. So, I mean, it, we, you know, Kristi, who runs our housing rehab program, has been doing that for, you know, a long, long time. And so, I mean, her and Bob have been running that program, and we don't have new staff coming into that program. And we do have, obviously, requests for, you know, by Spanish-speaking people for loans. And so, we work, you know, through the people that we've got on staff who will help. And I think Antonio Vargas, too, at the fire department. I mean, we have a lot of city staff who are willing to do it over the phone and be available. And I think the housing authority has found there's some kind of a number you can call where it translates for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've been using that.
The other thing I want to point out is the Latino Service Providers Coalition, I should probably use this. The Latino Service Providers Coalition, which is part of the State Line Literacy Council, they're very helpful with us. They'll help people with applications. They'll help people with some of the documentation. And we do fund the State Line Literacy Council with our CDBG funds. So, we try to do things in other ways in order to make sure that our Spanish-speaking residents are helped. We also provided, just this last year, we provided fair housing outreach with the State Line Literacy Council in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking residents.
And, you know, with our new, we've got a new secretary position at the housing authority with 2120 Ruff retired. That's where we're filling it, is on the bottom. And I know that Kathy had had a number of bilingual people, and we're still going through the process of filling that position. So, even if we have someone that's not a specialist, but at least you have someone on the front line who speaks Spanish, I know Kathy is really, it is a goal of hers right now to try to, to address that issue. I mean, she had talked to me about it a couple of weeks ago.
Great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear it's a priority.
Yeah, so it's a priority. It's just sometimes difficult to do with not a lot of funding.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Matt, I have a quick question on page 33, where it says, "Private sector impediments, language barriers, especially in a rental and land contract realm of housing." Have we had any complaints of individuals who may not, where there is a language barrier, complaining of they've been taken advantage of, didn't really understand it, felt the landlord who's doing the land contract use that to their advantage in it? And I don't want to put Mr. Finnegan on the, on the spot, but I know he does a lot of land contracts. And I, I guess from the landlord's point of view, I guess I want to be assured or maybe hear from him how he makes sure that this doesn't happen, that they're not, you know, taken advantage of. And definitely, Terry, I don't know if you've seen any complaints coming that way, or people complaining about that.
This specific item came up at our, when we had our community leaders meet for our focus group for one of our workshops, and it also came in from our planning, our planning division with some of the non-conforming status, a loss of non-conforming status issues. And it's difficult because when they come in and they don't understand the, you know, what they signed, you know, there's nothing really we can do about it except for maybe do some outreach to teach them what some of the language or what they should be looking for, or find an advocacy group that can help them if they do have, if they are getting into a land contract, just so they... One of the things that came up in the focus group was that Spanish-speaking people are taking advantage of Spanish-speaking people. So, those who are bilingual will take advantage of those who are not fluent in English, and those who aren't fluent in English trust the people who are bilingual. So, that was one of the main, or one of the concerns that came up in the focus group was that specific item, the Spanish, Spanish-speaking population taking advantage of the Spanish-speaking population. And then again, like I said, with the planning division, that came out when we interviewed staff as an issue with the land contracts, too.
Okay.
And did you ask Mr. Finnegan?
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious, because I guess, I mean, there's a statement that you made that I, I don't know if I'm really comfortable with when, when we say, yeah, we, we know it's happening, or it may happen, and then once it happens, there's not too much we can do about it at once this happened. So, I'm confused as into that whole realm, as to where does fair housing step in if it does happen? And I come to you, and I say, this is what happened, I signed, I didn't understand, I believe I've been taken advantage of, so then it just...
At that point, we would take a complaint, and then we would send our investigator out to do an investigation.
Okay. Okay.
Some of these things came in before I...
No, I mean, and that's fine. I mean, I, I guess, I just wanted to ask that quick question. But I guess, Matt, if you don't mind, just to quit, I mean, just, because as we talk about the fair housing, we want to make sure that everyone in the city is being treated fairly, that I know it exists, but if we minimize it of people being out there, being taken advantage of, then I think that's what this is all about.
Yeah, I do a lot of them, and frankly, I have four or five people that I go to for any kind of translating. If there's any going to be any documents being done, there's two issues. One is, is the language issue. The other thing is making sure that what's being translated is accurate. So, I usually try to make sure that there's one of, one of, one of my people is there. I've got a lady that works with me all the time that's bilingual, but I also want them to have a family member there that's bilingual as well, so they can feel comfortable that everything is being translated accurately. I mean, that's, especially when you get into contracts. We do all of ours with, with an attorney, and she makes, she makes sure that they're, that people are understanding. So, it, it, there's a couple of different ways. Some people are doing these like on the hood of a car. I mean, that, that's not so good. You know, sometimes that does happen out there. And what Terry did say is there are, there is evidence that there are, sometimes, sometimes people are taking advantage of their own people quite dramatically. You know, they've been here longer, they understand the ways long, better, and then these people are trusting, but not, you know, because of their, or they were, they're both Spanish-speaking. Sometimes they do get taken advantage of that way.
Okay.
So, that's all I can say is you just have to make an effort to do it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to thank you for your job well done, everyone that was involved. Thank you for answering the questions that we may have. And I, and I just feel if there's any council that has any additional questions, feel free to reach out to Terry and let her know. I'm sure she'll be happy to get the information that, that we need.
And my phone number is up on the screen there.
Okay.
And then the, how you can get to the full document is there. I didn't mention in the beginning that the city is required to do this every three to five years. Look at their policies and procedures and see if there's anything that, you know, indicates that there's an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
All right. I do have one question that just left out at me, because now that I think about it, I don't think I've ever seated up on the board. Does the Beloit Housing Authority have their forms translated into Spanish for individuals?
They have some translated into Spanish. They have their change form and some resource information. They have a few that are translated, the ones that are needed the most. Their application isn't translated. And that's partly because the staff isn't, I mean, if you don't have, you have to have a staff there in order to know what the people are filling out. So, hopefully, when we hire the new person, they'll have some bilingual abilities. Well, and now that Kathy's there, I think they're slowly translating some forms.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, reports from boards and city officers. 11-8, please.
Resolution approving farm leases between the City of Beloit and Billericay, who request that we don't farm.
Mr. Flash.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item is the award of a farm lease for the Woodman property on the north side of Burton Street between Sun Valley Drive and Frederick Street. Leasing the property for farming will save approximately $5,400 a year in mowing costs and will generate rental income from the property of approximately $3,185 to $5,390 per year. The lease is for a term of five years, which will allow the lessee to recover upfront costs associated with initiating the farming operations on land that has not been previously farmed in the recent past. An alternate proposal was also received to maintain the land as grass, which would be baled for the farmer's use. The alternate proposal would not involve any monetary payments, so it can be handled administratively by the city manager and would not need to go to a council resolution. The benefit to the city is some cost savings in the mowing of the grass for that expensive mowing, and the benefit to the farmer is the use of the baled grass itself. The city could still be responsible for mowing some of the terrace areas, depending on the details of the final agreement, if this option were to go forward. This option will result in less potential for dust and debris during planting and harvest or reducing the savings of income potential compared with the farming proposal. What we have before you today is an approval of the lease. We had to put something forward. It's still an open choice on whether the council wants to go with agricultural farming or with just the mowing option. There were three proposals received for this, for the farm lease. The highest is of $20,335 for the five-year term from Joe Rebaugh of Janesville, Wisconsin. The alternate was from, for the, for the mowing was from Dan and Ashley Hughes of Janesville, where they would mow the existing grass instead of farming the land. The cost for the farm lease, it would be, I guess it's not really cost, but the income would be $20,335 over the five-year period and approximately $27,000 in savings for the mowing of the, of the general fund, for a total of $47,335 net benefit to the city. If you choose the alternate with just the mowing of the grass, we'd have a savings of between $18,000 and $27,000 in the mowing in our general fund budget. Awarding the farm lease, like I said, will result in the next savings of $47,335 or benefit to the city. If we choose to do nothing and not have the farm be leased, the land be leased for farming or be allowed to be mowed by a different farmer for their use, we still, we still have money in the budget this year to, to mow it with city forces, and will have no impact on the current adopted budget, period. Right now, the resolution before you is to award, and the decision is yours.
Thank you. It's our motion for approval. Just to get it to discuss. Motion by Spritzer, second by Vanda Bogart. Counselor DeForest. You guys are killing me, Donnie, tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request that we lay this item over and receive input from the residents that live in the area budding this parcel of land to receive feedback from them about the agricultural use. I would request that a notice be sent to them to let them know that this decision is before us and give them the opportunity to come to this body to express their concerns with us.
That would be fine. We can present a letter. We can get the addresses of the adjacent parcels and send that letter to the residents of that location, basically the owners.
Okay.
Then they would be able to only speak at the public comment portion, correct? Because it's not a public hearing.
Correct.
I just want to get the right terminology in the letter I'm sending.
Right.
And I can instruct them of that in that letter, that they would be allowed to speak on this item at the public comment portion of the agenda.
I mean, that would be great.
Which is fine.
I certainly don't want the city to continue paying to mow it, but I want the residents to have some say in exactly what we do with it.
Exactly. Yes, our goal was to try to reduce our, our overhead costs of the mowing.
Absolutely.
Any way possible.
Thank you for being proactive about that.
And Counselor DeForest, in true fashion, I will ask that question again. When you say lay it over, how long are we talking about?
I would like to make a motion that we lay over this item until our meeting on April 16th, Mr. President.
Thank you. There is a motion, and by Counselor Spritzer, and we have comments. Counselor Haynes.
Actually, I was just simply going to point out that we had a very tight window, which we've already defined, so I'm okay.
Thank you. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Well, I think that's a good idea to set it over. This is a parcel that the city essentially inherited from the Woodman's operation a number of years back. It hasn't been farmed up to this point, as far as I know, in the last umpteen years, and to start farming it without having at least the opportunity for the immediately contiguous landowners to have some input is, is a way we should not go. I think we should set it over for two weeks.
Thank you. Counselor Nuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. This certainly is an attractive offer to look at. The net savings for the city on the expense side is nearly $5,000. The net gain is nearly $5,000, so savings of $10,000, or $5,000, $50,000 over five years with the contract. But I, too, agree that, especially because there are residential properties that are directly adjacent to this, that it's very important that we keep them in the process, as the process does matter. And as Counselor Vanda Bogart has pointed out, it has been a number of years since that has actually been farmed, and so many of those property owners may have bought it not realizing that, that was a possibility in their backyard. So, I appreciate your flexibility in looking at this.
Anything else? Counselor Spritzer.
I would just ask, in the letter, if you could, and I assume this is standard practice, include an email and phone number so that if people can't make the meeting, they can pass comments, and you can pass them along to us so that we know what people think.
Indeed, that's usual customary.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just ask the city manager a quick question here. So, this, the timeframe of getting the letters out should not present a problem, so we can act on it at our next meeting?
No, I don't, I don't think it'll be a problem. We'll get the basic information together and make sure there is contact information in case it can't come or don't want to come to the meeting, and get it out probably in the next day or so. We'll have plenty of lead time. Also, just for the record, there are a couple of residents that are using a bit of the land for gardening and stuff. We were not going to incorporate that into the farm lease space. So, those spots where residents have been using some of it, we were going to leave those alone.
I think we might need to specify that to those individuals as well. Just let them know that we're moving forward with this. However, our goal is not to...
I'll include the map that shows that with the letter, so they have a better idea of where it's going to be.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
I will do that.
Yeah. Is there any other counsel comments or concerns on this? Hearing none, there's a motion and a second to lay this over to our next meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes. Seven, zero. Item 12, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Haynes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
I'm not going to, I'm not coming to the next one. I am so done. I am not coming to, I am not coming to the next meeting. Jim, you got that one.